I'd like to call the order of the February 6, 2018, meeting of the Planning Commission. Lester, would you please lead us with a pledge of allegiance?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Commissioner Pont?
Here.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Present by sound.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Here.
Chair Kistner?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on the agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussions nor take action on matters not described on the agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Is there any public forum? Closed public forum. Next item is the consent items. Members of the commission or the public may ask that any item be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. 4.1 is approval of minutes of January 16 to 18. 4.2 is a request for demolition permit, design review approval, and variance to demolish a 666 square foot portion of the existing residence and carport and construct a new 1,296 square foot addition and a new two-car garage at 1761 Stockton Street in the medium-density residential district.
Chair Kistner and staff would like to pull that item.
Okay.
Oh, I thought you were going to pull the minutes.
I'll circle back to that.
All right, that's it.
Because I was going to pull.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to pull 4.1.
What?
I would like to pull 4.1.
All right. All right, you pulled 4.1.
Right, well, my question, again, and I did contact Noah about, Planning Commissioner, I mean, Planning Director.
Bobby, would you turn, would you speak into your microphone, please?
About this. It didn't make sense to me that there was no, that there was a roll call vote called on something that didn't mention the motion. So I am pulling that, and I think Mr. House is going to explain.
And so you'll recall, last meeting, we had a, I'm sorry, at a December meeting, we had a vote on a resolution. The vote was to approve the project, however, staff had only prepared a resolution for denial in keeping with the recommendation. So therefore, staff brought the resolution back for action in January. However, we had to pull that item from the consent agenda in order to allow a roll call vote because not all commissioners voted to approve the project. There were other items pulled from that agenda, and through that process, there was some confusion, and there was never a motion and a second on the item, which is why the minutes don't reflect a motion or a second, and is also why 4.2 is back before the commission this evening. Staff needs a motion and a second in order for the vote that was taken to be legitimized. You will recall Commissioner Monnet, no, I'm sorry, Commissioner Knudsen.
And Monnet voted yes.
Monnet voted yes.
And Commissioner Pont?
And Commissioner Pont voted no.
And I abstained.
Commissioner Kistner abstained, and Lester was absent. Commissioner Hardy was absent. So we just need a motion and a second on that resolution to approve the project, and then a roll call vote, and staff is assuming the votes will remain as they were previously.
Do I hear a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
We just pulled 4.1, yeah.
They're related. 4.1 had incomplete minutes because we needed to correct the record on 4.2.
Should we approve that one first and then prove that's all?
I think we need to actually get the vote corrected today, and then we can update the minutes to reflect that there was never a motion and then brought back.
What confuses me, excuse me, what confuses me, Noah, is that I already see that noted in the minutes.
That's correct. So there was a roll call vote on the item at the last meeting, however, there was never a motion made.
But that's in the minutes.
So the minutes?
The minutes state, "Due to a lack of a motion, this item will be brought back for a motion and a vote to the Planning Commission meeting of February 6, 2018."
So the minutes are correct.
That's the way it reads to me.
That's correct.
Correct, correct.
Okay. It was Meyer for pulling it, but I did anyway.
Well, the clarification's helpful.
So I did it.
So I would suggest we square the minutes away first.
I would do. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, so moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monnet?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
For the record, I did review the video of the meeting, though I was absent.
So did I. Both of them.
So then getting to 4.2, staff needs a motion and a second and then a roll call of the folks who participated.
I make a motion to approve.
I hear a second. Okay. Roll call, please.
For clarification, may I ask who seconded this motion?
I did.
Okay.
It was not clear.
Commissioner Monnet?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
No.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
I abstained. I wasn't here for the.
All right, next item is public hearings. Item 5.1 is a request for discretionary demolition and design review approval to allow the demolition of an existing carriage house and construction of a new 1,626 square foot single-family home on a 4,750 square foot unaddressed parcel accessed via an easement across 1301 Allen Avenue in the medium-density residential zoning district. May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Kistner and commission. As identified, the project before the commission is a request for discretionary demolition and design review approval to allow the demolition of the existing, of an existing carriage house. I'm trying to advance my slide here.
I'm sorry, Noah, it's Dave Knudsen. I need to recuse myself from this item, and I'm wondering if Zenya can call me as soon as this item has been concluded.
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you.
So he has electronically left the building?
It's a commercial break, Tuesday Night Live.
I thought it was the end of.
I don't know if you're, I have a text blocking it or.
Of bar drinks and appetizers.
As mentioned, the item before the commission is discretionary demolition and design review approval to allow the demolition of an existing carriage house or barn structure and the construction of a new 1,626 square foot single-family home on a 4,750 square foot parcel in the medium-density zoning district, medium-density residential zoning district. The item also includes the construction of an accessory dwelling unit, however, that is not a discretionary item, and so that is not before the commission. For a little bit of background, the small 570 square foot parcel is located directly west or behind the home at 1301 Allen Avenue and is accessed via a shared driveway. The general plan designation of the property is medium-density residential, which is identified as intended to provide for single-family homes, secondary residential units, and is the predominant residential designation throughout large areas of the city. It's intended to maintain a development pattern consistent with the historic development pattern of St. Helena. There are several general plan policies referenced in the staff report. They include policies which encourage a mix of housing types, including housing in all density ranges consistent with scale and character of older residential districts, and the requirement for new development in or adjacent to these residential and historic areas to be compatible in pattern and character with the existing surrounding development. As identified in the staff report, staff finds that the project proposes to keep the form and location of the existing barn on the property through adaptive reuse of building materials into a single-family home and accessory dwelling unit, and has identified several methods with which staff finds the project compliant with the general plan designation. Zoning for the property is medium-density residential, as previously indicated. It's also located within the Adams Street Historic Resource District. The medium-density residential district provides for single-family detached homes and accessory dwelling units. As identified in the staff report, the project meets many of the medium-density residential zoning district standards, including building height, parking, lot coverage, maximum floor area. However, the 4,750 square foot parcel is currently developed with the 25, about 26-foot-tall carriage house originally built around 1900, and this structure is located two feet from one of the property lines and is built up to a second property line. In addition, it's accessed via a 10-foot easement, and there are several other unique elements that combine to make clear application of the zoning code standards difficult. You can see in the staff report, the project doesn't quite meet the requirements for a small lot development, it doesn't quite meet the requirements for a flag lot development, and there is a zoning code section, municipal code section 17.112.030, which discusses certain applicability of unique circumstances and how to determine setbacks in that situation. To further identify this, staff has provided copies of the site plan from the application packet. On the left is the existing development site. The property lines are highlighted in red. You can see the carriage house or barn structure there, up against the two property lines, the north and eastern, and then the proposed structure, maintaining those setbacks and then eliminating the roof structure that goes to the far western property line, and then proposing to construct an addition, which would be to the south of the building on this plan set. To further identify that, staff has identified or included the roof plans of this, just to highlight kind of the existing and then the proposed development pattern, just to further identify how the site is proposed to be developed. Going through the elevations, this is the existing barn structure. You can see the attached roof there, which is what goes all the way to what I believe is identified as the eastern property line in the staff report, however, that is actually the western property line. These are the elevations of both the proposed reconstructed carriage house building, as well as the addition. The applicant has proposed maintaining the siding of the building, however, you can see it is, portions of it are proposed to be operable to open up to glazing, to provide more light and air into the building, as indicated here. So these are two different renderings of the same elevation. So getting to that setback discussion per 17112.030, this section is relatively unique in that it identifies that the planning director shall identify, in unusual cases, where the location and relationship with the lot make it difficult to establish the front, the planning director shall make a determination as to where the front is, and then the second part of this section identifies that all required setbacks and yards shall be determined by the relationship to the front of the lot. It grants the planning director the authority to establish the location of these setbacks and yard standards, and then gives the planning commission the authority to review and approve them. As previously identified, there are numerous kind of unusual circumstances governing this site, the substandard lot size and dimensions, the fact that it is essentially a flag lot and a small lot, but doesn't quite fit either one of the zoning criteria for those lots types, and it's previously developed with the barn building, but is, which is proposed to be reconstructed in the existing footprint. So based on those things, the only issue with the project that staff has identified is essentially the interpretation of this zoning code section. Staff does find that there are unique elements and circumstances which would allow the application of this zoning code section, however, staff is not familiar with any recent developer proposals utilizing this section being brought before the commission. And so given that, it is recommended by the department that the planning commission determine the project is exempt from the requirements of CEQA under two separate categorical exemptions, and review the requested demolition and design review proposals, discuss the applicability of the zoning code section in question, and approve the requested actions, or alternatively provide further direction to staff and the applicant regarding the proposed setbacks. That concludes my presentation. I believe the applicants are here to speak, and it's worth noting, several letters in support of the item were received after the package was put together, and no letters in opposition to the project came in. And one further element, the current zoning code standards for ADUs identify that the pathway or the entryway must face into the front or side setbacks of the property. Staff has reviewed that language in, basically in concert with the updated language from the state, and that, the city is precluded from that requirement under the, I believe it's called a pathway, the cities aren't allowed to dedicate a pathway or a passageway for access to ADUs, and so initially that was identified as a concern, however, upon asking clarification of the applicable state law, that portion of our code is actually out of compliance. So that does not apply to the ADU construction in this development. Staff will bring that back for discussion with the commission at another time.
Good.
concludes my presentation.
Do we have any questions, staff?
Yeah, I have a question. You have, on, let's see, page 20 of 76, under Analysis, General Plan. It mentioned, I mean, this happened a lot in the past. It says the residential density shall be in the range of, for medium density, 5.1 to 12, but it's 16.
That's correct. So at some point, that was modified in the zoning code, but the general plan was not updated to reflect that modification.
So you're using?
We use 5.1 to 16. This has been there since, as long as I've been with the city.
I know, but it's supposed to be 16? You're saying it's supposed to be 12?
It's supposed to be 16.
Okay, but you didn't, you can't change the?
It takes an ordinance to modify the general plan, and actually, a general plan amendment. So staff assumes that an ordinance was done when the zoning was implemented, the zoning code was done, but they never circled back and corrected the general plan.
So you have to reflect the general plan in your staff report?
That's correct.
Okay, I was, I didn't know. In the past, you said that you were going to change it, but, okay. Thank you.
John?
I have several questions, if you'd please, Noah. This lot is not smaller than lots we've dealt with under the small lot ordinance. What is it in particular about this lot? In fact, it meets the width requirements, so what in particular about this lot means it doesn't, in your mind, fit under the small lot requirements?
Let me pull up my zoning code. I only have my digital version here, but I do recall, in reviewing the project, it did not clearly fit. It might have something to do with the width and the lot dimensions, and then also the street frontage, but let me confirm.
My recollection is that there is a minimum street frontage requirement in the small lot ordinance, but I don't have it with me.
And then, it doesn't meet the flag lot ordinance because it doesn't own the flag pole?
That's correct.
But that's the only reason it wouldn't meet the flag, was the length of the flag pole?
I'm bringing up the municipal code right now.
All I remember is that ordinance requires, you know, do 18 feet of the frontage with curb and gutter, but there isn't 18 feet of frontage.
I think it was the combination of the contiguous full-height curb along a public street, which has no public street frontage.
Mm-hmm.
And then the zero lot line side yard requirements, given that it's currently developed essentially as a zero lot line.
Wouldn't that be a variance, then, to the existing regulations, rather than we toss out the existing regulations and do a one-off?
Well, that is one approach that the planning commission could take, which is why staff's recommendation is what it is.
I almost hate to say it, I'm a big proponent of regular order, and throwing everything out for a one-off is a little disturbing. That means that, that means whatever we do tonight, if we go under the staff-suggested part of the ordinance, it's the only one in the city that will follow those rules, period. It's a one-off.
Staff looks at it slightly differently. It would be, the commission has never utilized this element of the zoning code previously. However, if the commission sees fit to do so tonight, then essentially, staff would take that as direction to look for other opportunities to utilize this code section, rather than applying a variance as the only mechanism available.
But what I'm saying is, whatever rules, let's say we agree with you tonight on the setbacks, right? So this house will have a 1.9-foot setback on one side and a 2-foot, 3-inch setback on the other. I doubt if that will apply to any other structure in town. So it's a one-off.
Similar to a variance situation, that's correct.
Yeah.
Is there something wrong with having a one-off?
No, that's the first one.
Can I ask, is there something wrong with having a one-off? I mean, what's your problem?
Sure it is. It makes it harder, because that means then everything can be a one-off. There's no standards in the ordinance for determining that the lot is odd or misshapen or, so it's whatever the public works director feels and the planning commission says. So every lot in town could be a one-off, if we cared to approach it that way. And that's why you write, general rules is to cover things in general, at least in my mind. Second thing, it doesn't meet the flag lot ordinance simply because they don't own the flag pole, is that correct?
Also, the dimension of the width, I'm going through that section now, but the dimension of the current flag pole would not meet that requirement.
Okay, well, if you read, there's a second section in there that allows for a minimum of 12 feet, and that's apparently what's been asked for, and this one is 12 feet. But part of that ordinance for the flag lot also requires that width to be reviewed annually by, I believe, Public Works to ensure that the way is still open. See, the Public Works or Fire, I can't remember which. So if we do that just as a one-off, can we include that requirement in there as well?
Absolutely. The project can be conditioned to address that.
Okay. If we go with the zero, or essentially zero lot line requirement, under the zero lot line section of the ordinance, it calls for CCRs to restrict development on the adjoining lots. Are we going to do that?
We don't have the authority to require CCNRs of existing lots. That's part of the issue that staff has raised previously with the review of the small lot standards. They're written for subdivisions, not individual projects.
Okay. Then I'm probably going to have problems with the zero lot line development. That means you won't be able to get to that wall to repair it, for the most part. I kind of have trouble with that.
There are a few other sections in the flag lot standards which also could be problematic. It requires landscaping along the panhandle. Essentially, it's also similarly written as if it's a newly created lot, not existing situation.
And it actually requires, this is, this is a more than 100-foot-long flag pole, correct?
It appears to be, yes.
Yeah, and the flag lot ordinance requires additional width at 100 feet, simply for safety reasons. So we're going to be doing something that, at least in the past, by our ordinance, would be considered unsafe. And I'm wondering if that has any reflection at all on the city in terms of liability if we move forward with this? I know we don't have city attorney here, but I would be, I would be leery of that, under that condition?
To the city attorney, I did discuss the situation with the city attorney, including the proposed interpretation of this code, and he was fully comfortable with the planning commission supporting the interpretation to utilize this code section. In addition, the project was reviewed by the Building Department, the Public Works Department, and the Fire Department for access and safety issues, and it's been conditioned to maintain the minimum width requirement for access that the Fire Department requested, in addition to reconstructing portions of the access road to make sure that it could be accessed by a truck.
Okay, so fire, police, planning, and city attorney agreed at the 12 feet?
In public.
As long as it remains clear?
Fire, Public Works reviewed the access section and the Building Department. City Attorney reviewed the proposed interpretation of the code language because it was a unique situation.
Okay, okay, there is that, I think there's a section, section of the code. How tall are the fences or the walls that are floating in the yard?
I'll leave that question to the applicant.
Okay, because it seems like our code restricts them to eight feet for walls and freestanding fences. So I'd be curious how tall they are. All right. Oh, looking on the drawings, is the full lower story of the carriage house a single open space?
Again, I'll, design questions, I'll defer to the applicant.
Okay, because all we've got is it shows as a single open space. So I'm curious how that, how that building is divided. It does show a fireplace. I'm assuming that's a gas fireplace?
It could not be any other.
Because of, yeah, the new restrictions from the BAA QMD. Then why do we need an extra two feet of chimney over the top of the roof line?
Again, I'll defer to design questions to the applicant.
All right, you go from 25 and 1/2 to, what is it, 27 and 1/2 feet? All right. I think I'm done with my questions for now.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Hardy?
Thank you. I found the plans difficult to read, so I'm going to ask you, Noah, to just help me with some clarifications here. I've got the plans oriented as produced, more or less north-south. It looks to me as though there is some setback, both on the west side and the north side. So, but I understand that there's one side where the existing carriage house goes all the way to the lot line, is that correct?
So that would be the actual west side. My staff report identifies as the east side. The north arrow was a little bit unique in the drawing, and so I will show you from the elevations. This is the barn structure, and if you look at the top-left elevation, that's essentially what it would be as you pulled into the property, and you can see there's an existing roof, shed roof overhang that was attached to the barn at some point in the past, and that goes all the way to the property line.
Okay, so it's the, it's the shed roof extension that goes to? Okay, so it's the, it's the shed roof extension that goes to the property line?
And this may be this, uh...
I don't know, unless I'm really confused, that looks to me like it is on the east side, so I'm just having...
Well, that's, yeah, the, the north arrow is, is a little bit of a unique rendering, but if you look at this site plan, the, that's up on the screens, you can see the roof, the roof plans.
Yeah.
And so the access drive comes in on the bottom of this, so that's, if this was a north-south rendition, then that's the southern property line, and then the staff report describes west, north, east, south, as, as if it's looking at the map.
Well, that, at the end of the day, I don't think it matters to me whether that's east or west. I, I am, it's a little bit more troubled generally by the difficulty I have reading the plans in this format, but that, and then I'll have some questions, I guess, for the I've probably been exposed to more than one too many boundary disputes, not to find myself wondering where property line location in reference to, or relation to the structure is a, a matter of concern. I'm, I'm wondering, well, how do we know where the property line is? But, but that's a question for the applicant.
The property was surveyed.
Okay, that's good.
I have a couple of questions for you. It was my understanding that if the footprint is going to stay the same, that the, you don't have to have a variance for anything that's out of compliance. Am I wrong, or is it...
No, no, that is 100% accurate. If they were to modify the building in its current location, that is correct. However, the extent of the renovation triggers the demolition permit requirements.
I see.
And what the code says is if you, essentially, it says damage, but, or if you demolish up to 50% of the building, then technically you should meet the setbacks for that, that zoning district when you reconstruct. The proposal is to utilize this code section, which identifies unique circumstances as being able to justify essentially what the applicant is requesting.
As opposed to a variance.
That's correct.
And the other question was, I can recall in the past approving several projects that had a 10-foot driveway and a 10-foot access to the back of the property for the same reason, because of how it was constructed, and that was never questioned, is that...
That's also completely accurate. Those, in those situations, it was either an existing flag lot or the lot itself. The driveway was contained within the property, so 10 feet is plenty of a width for a vehicle to access. However, our code has very specific standards if you're creating a new flag lot that makes the, the intended is that it's wider, and oftentimes because if it's a flag lot, it's being accessed maybe multiple vehicles, and so you want two-way traffic sometimes, or...
But this isn't creating a new flag lot?
No, this is an existing lot of record, they have a right to develop this lot because it is a legally existing parcel. The question is just, what are the applicable setbacks because of the unique circumstances?
Okay, thank you, McClaren.
All right, I think enough questions have been asked. Would the applicant like to speak, please?
One of the applicants, married to Kim Finney, the other applicant. So essentially, we bought the barn from our neighbors, Jeff and Cindy Warren, and Cindy's here, about six years ago, with an eye towards restoring it, and that was the first, we just wanted to restore it and keep it and use it. It's, it's currently housing some different families of species of rodents and bats, and we have some things in there, but it's, it's, it definitely needs some work. And during the process, not understanding all the ins and outs of the city code, we worked with Noah and Joshua, architect designer, to figure out the best way to keep the barn historically accurate, as well as meeting all of these different, you know, it's like calculus with all the setbacks and different, and I don't pretend to be an expert on it. And it actually was a lot more in-depth than I, we thought about, can we make it one, I mean, we talked to Noah, do we make it one lot, do we make it a flat, I mean, all these different things? And I think smarter people than me, Noah and Joshua, came together and tried to get the, the, the best plan together that would satisfy all these different lot requirements, if you will. And so here we are, essentially. So that's kind of the long and short of it. As far as questions, I can answer aesthetic questions and sort of why we're doing it, but as technical questions, I'll, I'll sort of leave up to the experts, but let's...
I actually like the design of the, of the place. Is the first floor of the carriage house a single open space?
Yes.
So this is a one-bedroom house with a one-bedroom ADU, yes?
I'm not 100% sure that, I think there is one bedroom. There's, the downstairs is definitely a big open room. I don't know, ADU, I'd have to defer, is that an alternate dwelling? Yes.
Okay, so it's, it's basically a two-bedroom house, when you, if you ignore the ADU. But it's a one-bedroom house with a one-bedroom ADU.
That is essentially correct, in looking at the site plan.
Okay, okay, okay.
Sorry.
And the kitchen and the bathroom for the main floor are connected only by a breezeway, if I'm looking at design correct?
Are you talking the main floor being the bottom floor?
Yes, please.
Uh, yes, essentially, I think there's, it's connecting, we had a couple of different designs, but...
It looks like it's got a, it looks like it's got a single roof over it, but it looks like the, the first floor, the kitchen is, is connected only by a breezeway to the main part of the house. That, that's correct?
I, I think so, yes.
Okay. How tall are the freestanding walls?
Of...
He's not the designer.
Well, he said he could answer design questions, so I'm asking design questions.
Sorry, I said aesthetic questions, so I can tell you what I think it's going to look like, but I don't know.
Okay.
Because this, it's, it's been a, a process, and the design has changed, not several times, but a few different times, and as far as actual elevations, I wouldn't, I couldn't speak to that.
Okay.
I mean, I can tell you what I think it's going to end up looking like.
And this is, once again, a locate, this is a location question. Being that the whole carriage house is coming down entirely, can you give me some of the reasoning behind sticking with leaving the structure so close to the lot lines all the way around?
I can't give you the technical answer to that, because I think it's also part of the, of how we're able to get sort of the maximum use of that lot, but from an aesthetic standpoint, I didn't want to take the barn down, for lack of a better term.
Okay.
I want it, it's, I love looking at it, and I want to continue to, that's why we're trying to, what, what everybody will see from all, from 360 degrees is exactly what they see today, just better.
I'm, I, well, this is another easement question. Are you acquiring construction easements? I can't see any other way to put this sucker up.
Why not?
Hmm? I can't put the outside wall on from the inside.
Why not?
Because you're doing board and batten, aren't you? You're using old recovered wood?
Board and batten is a...
Can you please come up to the podium? Thank you.
Well, let's start with, how tall are those walls?
So the wall that you're concerned about, that's in the side, or the bottom of the frame there?
Well, you've got, you've got...
Should I walk up to the screen?
You've got two of them. You've got one that extends into the breezeway, and a second one that comes out from the kitchen-bath area.
I'm going to switch over to the overhead.
Or maybe not.
You're referring to this, this wall here?
That one.
Yeah, that's an architectural feature that's, if you look at the full...
Yeah, it looks like a, a full-height wall.
No, if you go to A 1.1, sheet A book 1.1, there's a little context of the lot there. And the edge of that architectural feature goes about 12 feet from the parcel line.
It, it, it's, how high is it?
Right, I'm saying that your concern was, it's a high wall, and the walls are only allowed to be eight feet max. So that's a code statute that pertains to structures that are within the setbacks. This wall is not within the setback.
I think it refers to any place on the site.
I, I think the distinction is that, from the design standpoint, that's not seen as a, a separate independent fence or a wall. It's an architectural element of the home, and if you look at the elevations, you can see that, that design element actually goes all the way through the kitchen-bathroom, that same wall or feature separates the kitchen and bath, and then serves to, to function as the rear foundation wall for the barn as well. So I think from, from Joshua's design standpoint, that was not a wall or fence element subject to the eight-foot height limitation that you're referencing. All other fences and walls proposed on the site are eight feet or less.
Okay. Well, it looks like a wall, talks like a wall, architectural feature or not, I, I would consider it a wall. And the six feet located in rear yard, side yard, is 17, 120010A. I'm thinking about B, not A.
I don't have it memorized, could you read it for me?
I, I don't either, that's why I'm reading it.
He asked you to read it.
I, I asked, could you read it for me?
Okay. Now, you're thinking of six feet when located in a rear yard, side yard, or other portion of the lot, including the front or side setback. I don't know. I'm looking at located in rear, rear yard or side yard, walls and fences up to eight feet in height, up to 12 feet for tennis courts, may be permitted with approval of a use permit by the planning commission.
If, could you read the section again about where...
When located in a rear or side yard, walls and fences of up to eight feet in height, or up to 12 feet for tennis courts, may be permitted with the approval of a use permit by the planning commission.
I'm, I'm still confused, this is not located in a, in a rear or side yard.
What'd you say, that's the front yard? What, what yard would you say it is in?
It's, it's not.
It's not in any yard?
No, the yard designation is...
Mr. Park, could you please speak into the microphone for the public?
The yard designation is specifically referencing setback areas, it's not the entirety of the parcel.
So this gets back to the interpretation of what the appropriate setbacks are for the property.
Or, just generally speaking, as that section of code reads, it's not, it's not talking about the entirety of a parcel, it's talking about the setbacks.
Except, well, I, excuse me for interrupting, but, but isn't it true, Noah, that there's a distinction in the code between setbacks and yards? They're both distances from the property line, and I understand that, but I believe we have a different front setback from front yard, for example, in terms of, of the definition in the code.
So the front yard and front setback are co-terminous in the code? However, what you're referencing is for a corner lot. The side yard is the non-front portion of the parcel that has a street frontage, whereas the side setback is an internal side setback, too, when there's developments surrounding it.
That's the corner lot.
That's exactly right, that's exactly right.
And otherwise, they'd be co-terminous, front yard and front setback.
That's correct. But in this, to get to Commissioner Pont's, I think the crux of the question is, it gets back to what is the appropriate setback for the property?
Right.
And then that drives the design. So again, this is a code section that hasn't ever been utilized before, so it makes sense that the commission would have a little bit of struggle with it, combined with the, the parcel itself. We've had several iterations of, of conversations regarding design and appropriate setbacks and all of those things.
I particularly struggle with, we have a code section that says for a zero lot line development, you know, it needs to restrict development on the adjacent parcels, and we have no way to do that. And I'm pretty sure that restriction is for safety reasons, and now we're blowing past that one, or such, I mean, we're already, we've already got a code section that says the flag pole should be wider, because it's greater than 100 feet. And we're blowing past that one. And now we're going to blow past the zero lot line exceptions for safety as well. So those are two safety restrictions that this project is suggesting we blow past. I have trouble with that.
I, I can understand that perspective. I guess the safety concerns weren't identified by the Fire Department or the Building Department in their review. With regards to the zero lot line, I, I think it is a combination of, you wouldn't want another, you typically would get an access easement there for maintenance, if your property was built directly on the property line, and then you wouldn't want another structure built directly adjacent to it, because that would potentially create some fire hazard. However, our code does have a requirement that would preclude any development within eight feet of this structure, even on an adjacent parcel. That's just something to, to inject into the conversation.
Well, I'm, I'm going to weigh in a little bit here on, on the practicalities, you know, having lived in my formative years, in a part of San Francisco where there was simply a mandatory six-inch separation between the homes and places with some regularity, went up and down, were repaired or otherwise modified, I, I don't, there may be costs that come with having to construct from the inside of a boundary only, as opposed to having some comfortable room on the exterior side of the structure, but it happens all the time. And doesn't seem to be any impediment, and it certainly happens routinely without any kind of easement, because there's no place on the other side of the property line where an easement would do you any good. So I, I don't see access as a civic concern, it, it will have practical complications or costs for the property owner. The long, narrow driveway is a sort of thing that fire departments generally seek to avoid for sure, and, and that is a safety concern, and the concern is with the potential for a vehicle to obstruct the path of the fire truck more than anything else. So, you know, I think that may be something we can address in some fashion in a condition of approval.
Yeah.
Really, sorry, really quick.
Totally understand that, and that's why we had Capone come out, and we didn't just haphazardly do this. We had him come out and say, this is fine. And I will add, I think part of his, his support for the proposal will be, this will be a fully sprinkled residential building, built to 2018 standards, instead of a 100-year-old redwood barn, right on the property line.
But you, we, I, I'm going to suggest that we consider adding the same kind of requirement to this easement that goes with the flag pole for existing flag lots.
I can address that. If, there's a statute within the flag pole standards that exempts the mandatory width requirement for the access if the parcel is developed prior to, is it '53?
Right now.
So, I mean, if the concern is the, the detail... So, I mean, if the concern is the, the detailing of the flag pole and it being out of sync with your, uh, concerns about the code, it's, it's addressed within the flag lot standards.
Which we are ignoring. So I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting that since this is a one-off, that won't fall under flag lot standards, isn't gonna fall under the small lot standards, that we include in the requirements for this, if we move forward as recommended, the requirement that, and the allowance for the fire department to inspect annually to ensure that the way is fully open and be kept fully open.
As you said, I think that's stated in the code that that would be required. So if it's not already in the, the write-up for the approval of the project, I think that's perfectly appropriate.
I, I would, I, I don't know that they're mutually exclusive, but I'd take it every approach. I'd just prohibit parking in the easement as a condition of approval. Because in that, in my experience, the, the primary concern of the fire departments has been, um, the occasional experience with, uh, vehicles parked and obstructing access to interior lots.
We just dealt with a, a flag lot with a much shorter entrance. I mean, it was 16-foot wide and they had to provide room for the fire truck to turn around. So this is well, 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 under that.
Do we know that it's more than 100 feet, Noah?
It looks pretty certain. I haven't scaled it, but it looks pretty certain.
Do you have a scale here? Is that your concern, John, is that it's more than 100 feet?
That's a trigger in the existing flag lot ordinance to make it wider.
So, but...
It's not a flag lot.
But you, you just said...
I, I know your, your belief is this isn't a flag lot, but it looks like a flag lot.
Well, you just told me that we can't use the code reference from the flag lot.
That's because it's not being, that's because if we follow the recommendation of staff, it's not proceeding under that part of the ordinance.
I guess I'm still confused while you're...
Right? It's proceeding under a one-off part of the ordinance.
Dave, if you're gonna speak, you, you do need to come to the microphone and, and speak for the record.
So, for the record, it's, it's not a flag lot, so I don't understand how you can use that. That's why we've done all these months and months and hours and hours and, I don't care about the dollar amount, to address all of these issues because it is a unique lot. That's the whole point. So we're trying to do everything we can to make it compliant with all of these rules. We had the fire chief come out, he approved it. We've done all of our homework, all of our diligence. We wouldn't disrespect you by coming here unless we'd done that. So it's not a flag lot. It's a lot that we're trying to utilize to, I think someone said it earlier. Currently, we have a barn that if you by accident dropped a match in, would go up in 30 seconds. And we're trying to restore that barn and adhere to all these different codes that, it seems if we're having this discussion, no one really understands them.
I recognize that the staff recommendation is this not proceed as a flag lot. However, the flag lots, if it was a standard flag lot, has a requirement in it that the fire be able to review that flag pole once a year and have the owner keep it clear. I want that, I would suggest that that requirement be shifted to your one-off to ensure that that remains clear, that remains open, that remains the full 12 feet in perpetuity.
And I would agree with you.
Fine. I didn't say it was a flag lot. I said I want that pole, suggest that pole be treated as if it was. It's not the same thing, if I may say so.
No problem with that.
Look, this is a difficult process. I mean, it's hard to go through months and months. Sometimes people go through years of planning before they stand up here in this incredibly uncomfortable position, you know, kind of holding court. So it's, John, it was confusing the way that you're approaching it because on the one hand, it seemed one way. It's, it's my misunderstanding, I apologize. But, I mean, this is a, it is a unique situation. It's a very unique parcel to have an existing agrarian structure on it and to arbitrarily move it out of its position and yet go through the efforts to keep its character is, it's a lie. Why would we do that? And we have an existing code path that allows the passage of this without having to get a variance. And I don't know why this code would be written if it weren't for the author's understanding that St. Helena has a lot of unique lots and unique characteristics. And if somebody were to need to develop one of those, they must have thought that it would be appropriate to have a feasible code path. I don't know why we would ignore that and throw it out.
Well, if this code goes back...
I, I think this is enough. I, I, um, I think we've had enough back and forth here. Uh, I, I think that, um, uh, you're, you're right in what you're saying, however, it is at the planning commission's discretion whether we use what they have, the planning director has recommended or not. And so I think we've had enough back and forth discussion on this.
If I may add something, please, it's not a back and forth.
Go ahead.
I've been to many of these meetings and, um, a big concern was keeping the integrity of the neighborhood and the approval of the neighbors. In this barn property, exactly where it is with these plans, we have gone over with our four direct neighbors that it affects, and those are the four people that took the time. Two of them are here to come. This, and if I may ask, has anyone seen it? Did anyone walk down the driveway and see it? Have you? Have you seen it?
I did. No, I haven't. I haven't been out yet.
It is the most beautiful barn in the middle of four homes, and we wanna keep it like that. We're not asking to rip it down and build a McMansion. We want it exactly how it is, without the skunks, without the possums, without the fleas. This barn standing that's a torch right now cost me $20,000 a year to maintain a shed. We have two children, we're here forever. We wanna make it nice and livable and usable without the expense of nothing. And we have all four neighbors' approvals, and that's what you always ask for. So I ask that you please consider that when making your decision. Thank you.
Is there any public comment? I'll open public comment. Seeing none, I'll close it. Mr. Hardy, would you like to open the discussion, please?
Sure. And I, I still have one question. I'm hoping you'll be able to answer for me now, but, but, uh, try to take this in some logical order. I find this parcel appropriate for use of the, um, code provision for, uh, creating, uh, unique development standards for unique parcels. That, that doesn't trouble me. Uh, it's certainly not the only unusual interior parcel, uh, in town, uh, but there aren't a huge number. I don't know whether any of the others have barns on them or not. Uh, some of them certainly are developed, uh, but, um, they don't, uh, fit in very well with the existing code. And, uh, and again, so, so the use of that code provision makes sense to me. Uh, the applicant's goal here reflected in the plans to, um, build a new structure incorporating as much recycled material from the barn as possible in that footprint also makes sense to me. Not simply, uh, because we'll see something similar to the existing barn, but also because I think that's an approach that minimizes, uh, in, in the end result in terms of the before and after, uh, to disruption to the neighborhood. It, it doesn't, or at least it shouldn't seem like a big change to the status quo, and there's some real advantages to that. Long, narrow driveways are, for me, and I think they should be, uh, you know, something that, that we pay close attention to. And, uh, you know, with, uh, adoption of a condition that is borrowed from the flag lot ordinance, uh, I, I think those concerns are appropriately addressed. Though, one thing that does concern me that we haven't addressed so far has to do with the relationship, uh, between the ADU and what I'm gonna call the primary residence. Is there an interior connection between the two, Noah? Has that cleared you from the plans, or do we need to bring, uh, the architect back to answer that question?
I asked that question. So the, the upstairs is accessed via a covered but unenclosed staircase.
Right.
And I believe, and Joshua can correct me, but I believe when you enter the barn structure, a portion of it is unconditioned to get to the ADU and then the separate bedroom. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's an, it's an open air corridor. The, the gaps in the boards on the south side of the corridor, uh, serve for air circulation. It's unconditioned.
So there is no direct connection between the ADU and the primary residence?
That is correct.
Thank you. Well, I, I think that's very important because I don't think there's any other way in which the design would qualify for the, uh, ADU-based exemption. Um, as it is, it's probably all too easy to, um, establish a connection after the fact, but, uh, there are all kinds of things that happen after, uh, projects are final, so I, I don't wanna dwell unnecessarily on that.
I would say that's a, it's...
Go it to the microphone.
It's important to the design that, that would never be enclosed, and I realize you can't control what happens.
No, and I'm, I'm not proposing that we should attempt to. Uh, I, I, you know, what we review and, um, most often, one way or another, approve is what's presented to us. But with, um, structures that in effect combine uses, in this case, primary residence and, and an ADU, um, separation sometimes is, uh, essential to authentic compliance, and that's why I asked the question in the first place. And what's at issue is that 400-square-foot exemption, which is essential to the project.
I understand.
So it, it's just, uh, then a point of information, if you will. You have to maintain that, uh, separation, uh, in order to remain code compliant, and if you were to, um, alter the relationship of these spaces after the fact so that there was a direct connection, then, uh, you would immediately, uh, be in violation of the allowable development area. So, uh, but, I mean, that, we've addressed my only concerns. I, I, I think, um, we're fortunate to have a situation where an interior lot development can be proposed on this basis because I suspect as, uh, things change hands and, and other, uh, interior lots come forward for new development or redevelopment, that, uh, we're gonna find it can be very challenging, uh, to, uh, settle on plans that, that aren't, uh, really disruptive to the neighbors.
Commissioner Minnott?
Um, yeah, I, uh, it seems to me that any of the, I mean, I'm usually really very conscious of setbacks for, for neighbors, but there's no change here. All the impacts seem positive. And, um, and, you know, I, I really appreciate all the care that you did take in, I think you, um, Ms. Finney, is that, you articulated, um, some of my feelings very well. The neighbors are all in, all in favor of this. I went by today, it's absolutely beautiful. I mean, the, the front house is gorgeous and the, and the barn is exceptional. And the fact that you're using the siding from the barn is just, is, is wonderful to my mind, and I, I laud you for that. And I just, I think it's a great project, and I hope that you have a lot of fun and enjoy it for generations. So I'm, I fully, I fully support this project.
I'll always say this, I like the design. Uh, you've got an unusual structure with, um, essentially three separate spaces, four if you count the ADU, that you have to walk out into the open air to get to from one to the other. I kinda like that. This is California, uh, 95% of the time, it won't be a problem. And the 5%, well, you just huddle in the large room next to the fireplace and pull up a blanket and sleep there, I guess. But, you know, I, I like the design. I remain uncomfortable about using a piece of ordinance that has never been used for a one-off, and I will continue to remain uncomfortable with it. And I also remain uncomfortable with the length and the width of the access, and I also remain uncomfortable with how close it is to the neighbors. Yes, your neighbors bought off on it, but this is a permanent property right that goes with the property in perpetuity. I'm not sure that all the neighbors forever will be happy with that. And that's something we're gonna have to consider as well. If it got moved a little bit, I'd be much, much happier with it. I recognize you can't get any more width on the driveway without taking a chunk off a house someplace, and that's the luck of the draw. But 12 feet, I think, would be the absolute minimum that anyone could get away with for more than 100 feet. That's just, it's, it's risky, and that's why we have an ordinance that says over 100 feet, it needs to be 16 feet wide. So, um, with that, I think my concerns, and there they are, is this place should move a little further away from the edges, um, and that you can do.
Well, I like the design a lot. I, I have the same concern Commissioner Pont does with the 12-foot driveway. If we can condition that so that, um, there's no parking in that driveway, I think I'd get to approve the project. I think the design is super. I think you've done a really good job with the design. I like it. Uh, I, I am concerned with ADUs in general because I don't think they're gonna be used the way the intent of the law is, but that's the way it is right now, and so that I, I could not deny a project on that right now. That is something we're gonna look at in the future, uh, and that's the appropriate time for us to start judging things on that. So that's what I have to say, and, um, I'm open to, um, a motion at this point.
Well, I make a motion that we take, that we, um, accept staff recommendations. It was my understanding that, oh, I, I, if you wanna condition that with the, with a, with a requirement that there's no parking in the driveway, is that what you wanted to do?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't know how that will be enforced. Um, I don't know if that's possible, but, um, if that is, then I would add that to my motion.
But you also ingreated the inspection provisions that go to the flag pole of a flag lot, even though this is not a flag lot.
No, I, I don't understand what you mean by that.
On a, on the flag pole of a flag lot...
But it's not a flag lot.
I, I know, I know, I know. The way our ordinance is currently written...
Just refer to the driveway.
The driveway. There is a... There is a inspection opportunity annually by the fire department to make sure it remains clear.
Once a year?
Not just the no parking, but you don't plant plants in it, you don't encroach into the space, you don't put a pop-out window, you don't do anything else. It remains clear and open.
Is that a standard?
As mentioned, the flag lot standards identify that as a requirement of the development of a flag lot. This is not a flag lot, but...
Okay. Then I'll add that one, too, in my motion. That's absolutely...
Go ahead, second.
So, that's the motion, to accept the staff recommendations with those two additions.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
On balance, yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. Enjoy it.
Can I just say one thing?
No, you can't, Cindy. But, you know, you're going to say it anyway, so go ahead.
I'm just saying anyway.
I know you will, no?
We are the ones who have easements on their property, and in 30 years, no one has ever been able to park in that driveway, because we have to have it open so we can get into our carport. So, I mean, that's a given anyway, so I just want you to know that.
Well, now it's more than a given, Cindy. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm going to bring Commissioner Knutson back on the line. Oh, and Commissioner Knutson, for the record, could you please specify the reason why you recused yourself from item 5.1?
Oh, I recused myself because I worked with the designer-architect, Joshua Park.
Perfect. Thank you.
The designer shaving his head.
Joshua doesn't know him, but that's okay. Go home, Joshua.
Our next item is scheduled matters. 6.1 is a consideration of amendments to the city's zoning ordinance, St. Helena Municipal Code SHMC, titled 17, potentially eliminating certain floor area exemptions in the low, medium, and high-density residential districts as deemed appropriate by the planning commission.
It's all yours, Noah.
Thank you, Chair Kistner, and members of the commission and the public. The item before the commission tonight, 6.1, is, as mentioned, is consideration of amendments to the St. Helena zoning ordinance, potentially eliminating certain floor area ratio exemptions citywide in residential zoning districts. There's a fair amount of history on this in that we have discussed or tried to have this discussion a few times, but have continued it several times due to absences. I'm glad to have everyone here, even if one of us is on the East Coast. And so, as you're well aware, from time to time, the commission has, and the council, staff, et cetera, have expressed concerns over some of our zoning code standards, primarily just kind of the way they're written, some of the consistency issues, et cetera. And so, as a way of addressing these, the staff has worked with the commission to prioritize a list of updates to these standards. The commission and the council have both endorsed this list, and the first one that we've been trying to have a discussion on is floor area ratios. So, this was originally brought to the commission December 19th. It was continued to January 16th, and we are here tonight to discuss it. I will identify that in the previous discussion. The commission asked that the floor area ratio exemption for ADUs not be included in this discussion, given the complexity around ADU issues right now, the city's pending housing strategy, those types of things that are underway. And I will add that the planning commission requested a survey be prepared, addressing or trying to get some additional information on ADUs. Staff has been working on that survey, and I expect it to go out within two weeks. And so, just be aware of that. The goal would be to take the responses of that survey, plug that back into the city council's housing strategy goal, in addition to informing this decision by the plan, or this discussion by the planning commission. So, I do appreciate the recommendation, as I think the timing's excellent for having further information available for these kind of policy discussions.
I think there was some other information that we were requesting. I think we also were looking for a legal opinion on ADUs and whether they had to be deed-restricted in order to qualify for this, and I think you missed that one, but I think we did discuss that.
And I will follow up with you to ensure I have a full understanding before we bring back the ADU discussion.
Okay.
So, the item before the commission this evening is floor area ratios. Essentially, the commission has expressed concern over the size and scale of homes coming before the body for redevelopment. One of the methods to potentially address this would be to reduce or eliminate some of the floor area ratio exemptions that are allowed in the zoning code. You're well aware, there's numerous ones. There's a 200-square-feet covered parking space exemption, 120-square-foot exemption for nonhabitable accessory buildings, exemption for nonhabitable basement or attic space. Balcony, porches, or decks have an exemption in addition to the 400-square-foot addition for ADUs. Staff has included a significant amount of analysis on all these issues. Generally, we have no concerns over the elimination of the 200-square-foot addition or exemption for covered parking. It seems that the 120-square-foot exemption is likely not applicable based on the code language. It's not really part of habitable space, anyway. Attics or basements, there's been a lot of discussion on that, and staff will leave that open. We have no concerns over any changes to that. Staff does have concern over a potential elimination for the exemption for balconies, porches, or decks, just given the potential to eliminate, or to impact, design features. Some of the more interesting elements of architecture involve those features, and so eliminating that could induce relatively bland design, may not provide articulation and design features. So, one may, one way to address it may be to provide some additional requirements, such as requiring two of the longest dimensions to be unenclosed, or something along those lines. Further, another separate way from the exemptions would be just to reduce the allowable floor area ratio across zoning districts. So, a 10% reduction in allowable FAR, those types of things are potentially on the table. At the direction of the commission, staff will work with the city attorney to ensure that any direction is fully vetted legally before bringing back a formal ordinance to make that decision. But generally, staff feels that if that was the direction of the commission, that would be able to be supported, given that design review for single-family homes was required after adoption of the zoning code and 93 general plan, and therefore reverting back to previous standards under those zoning code and general plan. Sequoian analysis is likely able to be done. Staff will confirm that if that's the direction of the commission. Available for questions and further discussion.
I have a question, Noah. Do you know off the top, or can you easily determine from the materials you have available what the allowable square footage is on our minimum standard lot size of 7,000 square feet?
I can look that up right now. I will say, on any lot, the minimum developable standard is, I want to say 1,800 square feet, but it might be 16, based on the previous project.
Yeah, that was 1,800 that applied for under 5,000 square feet for those smaller lots.
That's correct.
I think it's going to be more at 7,000. And I ask because with respect to the possibility of using a general reduction rather than scrutinizing these exemptions, I'd like to get a sense of what the reduction is based on a standard lot.
Sure.
We have these exemptions in fixed square footages, but, you know, what we see in allowable floor area varies with lot size, so I'd like to start off just with that 7,000 square foot point of reference.
So, for a 7,000-square-foot parcel, the maximum allowable floor area ratio is 2,380 square feet.
So, there...
How about 10,000, if you mind? Because we have several zones in town.
Yeah, let's look at that, too.
Lot sizes, 10,000.
Commissioner, is your mic on, Commissioner Pont?
It is now.
I'll just pull up the table, and we'll put it on the screen. And so, this is the relationship for FAR. As the parcel gets smaller, the ratio, or the parcel gets larger, the ratio gets smaller.
I think it should.
Do, do, do.
You've got to switch it.
Now, is David going to show up on the screen? No.
Noah, I would assume what we do now is a temporary fix until the new general plan comes in.
So...
There are some things in the new general plan that are going to reduce the size of some of these buildings, anyway, like the second stories.
That's correct. There are general plan, draft general plan policies in the 2035 update that will affect design separately. The city's internal staff right now is working on design guidelines, which will drive some design changes, so those are in addition to the zoning code-specific changes. So, yes, this is one way to look at this would be a temporary adjustment until we get through the general plan process, and then we could revisit it.
Could I ask you, and I, because I don't remember, the basement in the new general plan, I don't remember a piece in the new general plan about the basement.
I don't believe there are any policies regarding basement development.
Nothing, okay.
So, whatever the commission sees appropriate for basements is fine and could stick after...
I remember the second story, but I don't remember the basement.
That's correct.
All right.
I believe.
So, I believe everybody was worried about mass, how large the structure is, right? So...
Thank you for putting that up, Noah. Then, looking at the chart and going back to our list of exemptions, and I'll just start with covered parking space, that's 200 square feet of exemption that's available, which is pretty close to 10% of the maximum gross floor area at a 6,000-square-foot lot, which is allowed 2,100. And I think we see a fair number of projects come in on parcels in the 6,000 to 8,000-square-foot range. I know, you know, there's, there are bigger parcels out there, although typically, once you get to a certain point in size, at some point, someone takes advantage of the opportunity to divide, at least if they're in the medium-density zone. I honestly think we would be addressing the concern that seems to be propelling this whole discussion more effectively with something like a 10% reduction. It's going to be more than eliminating the exemption for a garage, even at a 6,000-square-foot lot size. Honestly wondering whether we want to take that biggest slice off on the very small lots. I think that's a point to pause and consider.
Lester, that would be less than, that would, if you took 10%, it'd be less than the 200-square-foot for the garage right now, so you'd be giving them some relief.
Yeah, leaving the exemption in, to be sure.
Yeah.
But...
I'm not disagreeing with you.
But that's, to me, that just seems like a simple way to have, if anything, a more concrete effect than to play, or to base a change at least focused on the covered parking area exemption. We've taken the ADU subject off the table, and I think that's important, actually, because it is bound with so many other things that looking at it solely in the context of these exemptions, I think, would be a mistake.
Excuse me.
But, yeah, I'm just going to throw that out there. I like that idea.
I think that's certainly worth considering, Lester. On the other hand, given modern American approaches to housing construction, a covered and enclosed garage is almost always a desirable thing. People seek them and seek to have them, for the most part. In fact, we're, under code, we're required to have a covered parking space. So, you're giving someone an exemption for that which they must do. I would just think, for the sake of simplicity, if we eliminated the exemption for something that you must do, would make everybody's life a bit easier. I understand that since you must do it, I don't think it would have a great deal of impact on what they build, because you must. And it would serve the same purpose as cutting back on the floor area ratio, and it would do it by not a blanket change and still having the exemption. In other words, give and take. With one hand, you give; the other hand, you take. It would just be eliminating one thing. Get your floor area ratio reduction in about the 10% you were talking about, but, yeah, would leave our requirement in place. So, I just think for case of simplicity, it makes sense to just eliminate. And I understand the other...
Chair Kistner, could I make a quick comment?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, Commissioner Pont, the only concern I would have with that, and we faced this back in December, is that the requirement is to only have a covered space, and neighbors seem to prefer a closable garage door. So, that we had this actually as public testimony for a project that we looked at, that having actually a closed garage door was more pleasant than having an open, a covered space. And so, while we are required, in the current code, to have a covered space, having that 200-foot garage exemption encourages people to close it up, and that's why I actually like having the garage exemption. I want to give people sort of maximum flexibility, but having that garage exemption encourages a closed garage door, which I think is, you know, helpful for our town. That's it.
I understood the exemption was for covered parking, not necessarily enclosed.
That's correct.
It would be enclosed if it's a 200-square-foot exemption. It's a, it's an exemption that you can, you know, close up, right?
I think what Commissioner Knutson is saying is he sees a benefit to providing for a garage much more than a benefit for a carport.
Oh, I agree.
Exactly right.
I would think almost everybody would like one, but I don't think it makes any difference on the exemption, right?
Aren't you required to have a garage on a single family?
So, you're required to have a covered parking space, and the garage currently, or I'm sorry, and the exemption currently applies to both a garage and a carport. That could be changed to only apply to a garage, and therefore, it would incentivize the construction of garages over carports.
Okay. Is that what you're saying, David?
Yes. What I'm saying is what I like about the 200-square-foot exemption is it encourages garages, not simply covered carports.
I...
Because it is enclosed space, and you have a 200-square-foot exemption for an enclosed space.
Currently, the exemption applies to both garages and carports.
So, that wouldn't apply then?
So, the idea would be...
You get the 200 square foot regardless.
Yeah.
So, then, what I see with what Lester is suggesting is that some of the bigger places were... is that some of the bigger places, we're gonna get more square footage cut off than if we use the 200 square foot.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm thinking, because we do.
I agree with you Lester.
We see a fair number coming in.
I just wanna be sure.
allowable floor areas, 24, 25, 26, 27 even. I think we've seen some at 2,800 square feet. And that's well within the range of parcels that are, you know, somewhat typical in our medium density zoning. It varies in different neighborhoods depending on the history of subdivision, the pattern of division. But 6,000 to 8,000 square feet seems to cover a lot of the parcels in medium density. And I'm pretty sure that the way in which the ordinance is written on floor area ratio and just again with the pattern of development that's going on right now.
Commissioner.
Your mic's not on.
Well, excuse me. Most of the issues that we have, most of the concerns that we have, thank you for reminding me, Zena, are coming out of medium density. I don't wanna say it's impossible to find a project where we'd have similar concerns in low density, but given the parcel size in low density and this kind of sliding scale, I think that's a remote possibility. High density, I'd like to suggest, is a whole different set of issues and concerns because by its very nature, unless something unusual is going on, we're looking at multiple units and may not want actually to. Do we have floor area ratio standards in high density?
It currently does apply in the high-density zoning district, but if you read the language, it only applies. The language quoted in the staff report identifies single-family homes, duplexes and triplexes as being subject to floor area ratio. I haven't confirmed that that language is consistent through all zoning districts, which I could do current right now. But getting to your point, typically, you, a lot of multifamily housing developers and designers do not provide garages because most of us don't park in our garages. And when you have a high-density development, there's a large number of cars. You wanna incentivize using the covered space, so you use carports, so people actually park.
They just present a whole different parcel design challenge, is what I'm thinking. So I'm really more concerned with how the FAR is working or not working for us in medium density than anywhere else. And I don't think I know enough about how it applies in high density to wanna propose a blanket reduction there. That might have unintended consequences. It would conflict amongst other things with our goal of generating more rental units, et cetera. But in medium density, again, I can see some real benefit. And I would follow the discussion about carports versus garages. I would eliminate the exemption for carports, leave it for garages and look at a 10% reduction across the board with a possible exception of what's going on at the very low end of our parcel size. And there, I haven't thought it through, so I don't know what I would suggest where we're at 4999 and less. And we have just a blanket 1,800 square feet, you know, which would apply on a 3,000-square-foot parcel the same as a 4999 or 5,000.
Well, we could, we could leave that the same. That first, that first row remains sixed, all right? If you wanna do a flat.
Well, you don't wanna have a really strange thing. I mean, if you apply a 10% reduction at 5,000 and leave 4999 the same, people are gonna be lot line adjust on the way.
Lot line adjust Mr. 4999, yeah. Please, take part of my lot.
You can change the shape of the curve, but I don't think you wanna create a bizarre stair step there.
I would think we have to take them all the same.
But, yeah, I'm putting it out there.
I kinda like the idea of encouraging garages versus carports.
I agree.
You know, I've seen some odd ones go up with carports that get converted into dining rooms, you know. They pull a table out there and put GD down there and voila, you have an open-air dining room. I've seen that a couple places already. I'd like to.
Well, we require. We require the construction, but not the use.
Not the use, correct.
And not that I'm proposing we should require the use, but what happens then with carports as opposed to garages is we're confronted with the fact that we've required the construction of something that most people don't wish to use.
Yeah, and if you tried to require the use, I think you'd roll up half the garage doors in town and find out that you cannot put a car in the garage.
I wouldn't bet a nickel on that one, John.
I think that's a good reason not to incentivize the construction of garages. It's going to encourage extra bedrooms that aren't counted. And that's important when you're thinking about water use. So I think, that's one thing, I think. The other is I don't see why it has to be a dichotomy, though our brains love to dichotomize. I can see a 10% reduction and exemptions for finished basements because I think we should incentivize building down and building up. So in this, we have an exemption for non-habitable basements and/or attic space. I understand that. I think we should have that exemption for uninhabitable and habitable basement and attic space.
I agree with you as long as it's below grade.
Well, below what?
Below grade.
Well, whatever, I mean, of course.
I don't think you wanna let them raise the floor area four feet and then build underneath that, Bobby.
That's exactly what I was, that's what I was thinking. And of course, it would have to be in a place, as Commissioner Knutson said last, where there wouldn't be a disruption of underground waterways and so forth, of course. But I think if it were, from an engineer's point of view and an architect's point of view and the developer's point of view, to have these, to build down and build up, I think that is, I think we should incentivize that. I don't think we should incentivize garages. And also, I don't like the idea of allowing porches, you know. Necessarily, first of all, they can be, they can be enclosed, but even, that's not my main concern because the porches go closer to the adjacent property. And porches can be used for parties and things that are noise polluting. And I think that the farther away from property lines that you have the potential for partying and noise pollution, the better. So I would like to keep the exemption, I mean, I would like to get rid of the exemption for porches, to not incentivize garages and to keep the exemption for habitable and non-habitable basement and attics and have the 10% reduction do that. And in cases where there's a basement where an attic proposed that, then we could exempt that. This wouldn't affect every single project. So it seems to me that that would have a general reduction that everyone would be affected by and then have some wiggle room to have additional exemptions when it seemed appropriate for the particular place.
I agree with some of that. Let me go with the ones I agree with. I agree that we should have some sort of exemption for habitable basements that are constructed below grade or close to below grade. I mean, I would give them 18.
I mean, I'm not gonna go down there and measure with it.
Yeah, but I'd give them 18 inches, 18 inches to two feet, something like that. Not, not just.
I'm trying to keep the height down in the building.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm thinking 18 inches to two feet. I think you're required by building code to have 18 inches between the ground and your joists right now. So I would think, I would think 18 inches to two feet, but certainly not four feet or six feet or I got one foot underground, that makes it a basement. We do have some, we do have some grade changes here in town. So if you, if you go with, you know, an average of, I think it'll work. On the, on the decks and porches, I like decks and porches for several reasons. If, if none other than, at least in this latitude, it helps getting your LED for your location, for your site. In other words, your energy efficient rating for your house. If you got a, if you've got a porch with a, with a large overhang and this latitude, it actually helps because it shades you in the summer, but lets the sunlight in in the winter. So I think that's, that's a viable thing to do, is to have a porch with an overhang. And here, some of them have to be four or six feet to get that, to get that bonus. What I would like to see happen is there be some sort of limitation on the size of them, right? You can't, if you've got a, if you've got an 1,800-square-foot house, you can't have an 1,800-square-foot porch, sorry, you know. I don't know what that size limitation is, but I'd definitely like to see a size limitation, but I would keep the exemption, you know, with, with some sort of caveat on how large that can be. I don't know how large that is. Maybe it depends on some LED calculations, maybe it depends on a few other things.
Well, that, I mean, that makes sense. I totally agree with that. And maybe it could be taken care of by getting rid of the setback exemption when you have a porch, so that setbacks would need to be maintained if you have a porch.
Well, I have a problem with that and the fact that I think architecturally, that just absolutely ruins an architect's job, absolutely ruins it.
Well, my sense about that Grace is that if you're gonna be designing a house and you cannot put the porch into the setback, as you can now, then you design the house so it's smaller, so you can have a porch.
Well, then enforce your setbacks and say that it can't be in the setback, but.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I was just saying.
No, you're saying eliminate them.
No, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Ponte on that. I think that's a, I think what he's saying is makes sense and I would be fine with that. But I think that the setbacks need to be honored when you're building a porch, rather than currently, you can go into the setbacks with a porch and they're, you know, and I, that would be a way.
I agree with that piece of it, Bobby, but I do not agree with doing away with them.
No, I, I.
Because I think that architecturally, I think they're absolutely necessary.
Grace, I'm not saying that. We, to some degree at least, agree that there, that we should leave decks, porches and balconies, but simply somehow limit their size.
Have them not go in, and I was thinking a good way to do that might be.
Why don't you guys come up with it?
Might be to not let it, I was thinking a good way to limit the size might be, rather than giving dimensions, to just simply say they can't go into the setback.
Then you could still cover your lot with a porch, but I.
Well, if it doesn't go in the setback, who cares?
I would think you would, you would limit it. It sounds like at least several of us think that there should be some consideration for habitable basements being exempt, as long as they're not too far above grade. I'm not sure what too far above grade is. I think four feet's too far above grade. I think a foot's okay.
I think we should do what the building code calls for on that.
I don't know what that is.
Don't you think the height limit will take care of that? I mean, you know, if there's a height limit, if you stay within the height limit and you have a basement, then it will take care of that.
What will happen, I think, Bobby, if you're not careful about how you set that up, is that you'll be incentivizing people to maximize height above grade so that it's easier to get a habitable basement in with a huge bonus in total habitable square footage. And we are definitely, our land values are so high, there's a tremendous natural incentive to maximize habitable space on any parcel that is developed in the current economic climate.
Every house.
And, and so you'll get, you'll get a push up and down at the same time, I think, is what happens, unless we're very, very careful about how we define the.
What's a basement?
Upper limit of.
What's a basement?
Yeah.
Otherwise, all the basement, how far above grade that.
Otherwise, all the houses will be 25 feet tall.
Okay, well, that's what I'm wondering to clarify.
And that's what we're trying to do is cut the mass.
I've been trying to clarify then, that you don't want the housing to go up to the maximum height limit allowed. That's what you're worried about with the basement that it will.
I'd be worried about everybody coming in and saying, okay, I've got one foot underground, that's a basement. It's one foot underground, nine foot above ground, guess what, that's a basement.
Well, I understand.
If they have nine feet underground and one foot above ground, that's a basement.
But I don't understand the concern if they're within the height limit. I don't understand what the concern is.
I would just chime in that a lot of projects that come in within the height limit and within the allowable FAR are concerning to the commission.
That's correct.
On a regular basis.
It's Dave again, could I, could I add, sorry to interrupt the discussion?
That's one of the things, Bobby, you've complained about forever.
No, I know.
Okay.
It's so great, it's so great to be remote.
Oh, excuse me.
For a while, I was watching as I was participating, but because there's a delay on the feed, it was very strange to hear Lester Hardy speaking while Noah was gesticulating. So I gave up watching. So briefly, I think this becomes extremely difficult. And personally, this is my, this is sort of my nut here. So this, if we start exempting this, not exempting that, creating new exemptions, et cetera, it's gonna be extraordinarily difficult to sort of understand where we've taken this. It seems like we have an agreement, each of us as commissioners, that we're getting huge massing that we're sort of grumpy about. Well, reduce the massing. What's the easiest way to do it? Reduce the FAR. Why not a 5% reduction at the very low level graduating to seven and a half to nine to 10%? And then you don't get into this complex, like, well, we're exempting basements, everyone's maxing out basements and, and, you know, I mean, it's, massing is massing regardless of where it is, you know. I don't, it doesn't, to me, it's still a big building, even if half of it's underground. And I'll go back onto mute.
But you don't see it.
No, I think that the massing problem, for me anyway, Commissioner Knutson, is not with, you know, if the massing is under, it's when the massing is offensive to the neighbors or offensive to, you know, visually above the ground. That's why, that's why I think it's a good idea to incentivize below-the-ground construction where appropriate and really below so that it doesn't, you know, so that doesn't maximize the above-ground stuff because that's the massing, that's where it, that's where it becomes, where it has impacts.
So to me, Commissioner, I disagree with you.
And it's a privacy, I mean, not just.
Wait a minute, don't both of you talk at the same time, please.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I mean, it's not just the massing visual, but it's also the privacy issue. You know, that's been, you know, when we're considering these, these, these projects, those are the two things that have been so contentious. And that's why I think the basement is a good thing to incentivize, to be able to allow people to get the square footage they want without offending people visually or in terms of their privacy.
All right, I would suggest at this point, we sit down and at least put down the things that we agree upon right now.
So staff has heard generally all commissioners, and not all commissioners, so this is a majority, are supportive of exempting basements with an average of two feet above grade, subject to some input from the building code.
Building code, yeah.
A majority of commissioners seem to be supportive of a 10% reduction in floor area ratios across the board with potentially looking at some method of addressing lots less than 5,000 square feet, but not encouraging or incentivizing existing parcels of 5,000 square feet to try to shrink slightly to accommodate that.
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with that.
Well, just so you know, so that everyone knows, I've taken some time while the discussion was ongoing just to create a quick table using my calculator here. And so, you know, what I'd like to do is, and I'm. what I'd like to do is, and I'm, I'm tapering off the reduction at the bottom in a kind of gradual way. What I've got worked out here takes us down to 1,700 square feet at 5,000 and less, and I've got the 10% reduction, and I'm, I'm working with the percentages, rather than focusing on the square footage, and I'm rounding off in ways that are going to result in a readable table. If we just take 10% off those square footages, and apply it directly without rounding off to the percentages, we end up with a mess. But I'll have something Noah can look at and bring back, or, or I can finish it off quickly, and we can look at it on the overhead tonight. I'm happy either way. But I think there is a way to do this that, that makes sense. So, just so you know, I end up at 5,000 with 0.34 floor area ratio, 6,000, 0.325, 7,000, 0.31, and then it goes pretty much 0.30, 0.29, 0.28, and so on. We get down to 14,000 square feet at 0.24. And then, again, the 10% effect shifts a bit, just because of the rounding off challenge. At 15,000, I have 0.235, at 16,000, 0.225, 17,000, 0.215, and then I'm on to 0.21, 0.20, and I finish at 0.19 on 20,000 square feet. So it's a, it's going to read, if you like this approach, essentially the same as the table we have run out. We're going to see numbers in that right-hand column that are maybe closer to a 5% reduction in the first few levels, tapering up to 10% at 7,000 square feet, and then they're going to be essentially 10,000, 10% reduction all the way through, although, again, because I'm keeping our percentage structure intact, it wasn't exactly 10% at each increment. I think it's close enough that it, it's not going to create any unintended consequences, and so I have a proposal.
So staff here is approximate?
I guess one of the things that bothers me about that, though, is that, is most of the lots that we have trouble with, I've got them on, most of the lots that we have trouble with are the small lots, Lester, not the bigger lots. I, I mean, every one of them, every one of the small ones, we've had trouble getting through. And so now you're going to, you're going to make more allowances for the smaller ones. The bigger ones, if they're, if they got more, you don't, it's not, it's not massed like that.
So staff will... It's a real reduction. I, I, I mean, well, I've run out the numbers in these smallest sizes. So at our 7,000 square foot lot, right now, our ratio allows 2380 maximum gross floor area. My proposal takes that down to 2170. At 6,000 square feet, our current formula allows 2,100 square feet. Mine takes it down to 1,950, because, again, I'm, I'm looking at what happens at the smallest, and, you know, you may think my concern there is unnecessary or inappropriate, but for 5,000 square feet right now, we allow 1,800. My proposal is that we allow 1,700. I, I think if we squeeze too hard on the smallest parcels, we're going to generate a lot more friction in the process with staff and the applicants, without necessarily ending up with a better result at the end of the day, or a discernibly better result. But, you know, that's just my idea. I'm, I'm not going to be offended if my fellow commissioners prefer to do it differently.
I think it's a good start, but I'm in agreement with Sher Kistner in this sense, that the massing on the small lots is further exacerbated by the smaller setbacks, so that when people have wanted to build two stories on the, and they can, within the FAR, on these smaller lots, it's five feet from the next property instead of 10, because those are the setbacks. So if the setbacks, I mean, my sense about the smaller lots is a small lot, so you build a small house. It's a single-story house, not a double-story house. You know, I mean, that's what I think are, I think, I think we were going that direction. We wanted our FAR numbers in our, our requirements to reflect that. And it's been difficult, because they haven't reflected that, and people have been going to the max and trying to, you know...
I don't think that we're able, nor do I think, do we want to address the, the two-story problem, which I agree, in some locations in town, particularly for some of these small lots we've been seeing, can be a real problem. You know, when they, when you've got a whole area that's one-story house, and somebody wants to come in and put a two-story house, I think, I think that's a problem. But I don't think we can address it through this device. What I, what I do think we can address it is when we go to these standards that we're going to work on by area, that, that will be the place to address that particular kind of problem.
Just to remind the commission, the review of the small lot zoning standards is on the list.
Okay, so we could even change setbacks.
That's exactly right.
So, so I think that's, that's the next step.
The difference, the difference between what I worked out for your consideration on my quick table here, and, and a blanket 10% reduction at this lowest number, is 80 square feet. It's a difference between 1,700 and 1,620. 1,620 is what you get with a straight 10% cut on that 5,000 square foot or less number. And again, so, so I don't have a lot invested in that. I, I wanted to take the time to see what things looked like, if I made that effort, if it looked feasible to do it in a way that's clean, and is going to be workable for staff, although I'm happy to let Noah have the final word on what isn't, isn't workable. It looks to me like something like this could work, and it will have a direct effect on what comes to us, not dramatic. I, I would suggest that, and I, and I think your comments, John, go to this point, some of the concerns we have are going to be better addressed either in development standards or design review standards, or both, as opposed to trying to do it all with this raw number that we get out of the floor area ratio.
The only way...
But I think we can do something here, and I think it's worth doing.
The only way that might work is if you choke this number down so much, that it would cause, you know, disturbance in the populace. I think you could get there by using this, but you'd have to choke the number down so far that, that people would see it as perhaps arbitrary and capricious, and I don't think we want to go that route. In other words, if you allowed, if you had a floor...
It would blow up at council level. When people who'd invested, based on an expectation that they could build to this table...
Yeah.
...discovered that there was a really big change, it would blow up.
And staff...
This table were not, I mean, what you're suggesting, what you said, there would be 80, a difference of 80 square feet with the smaller lots. These, they would still be getting their 240 square foot exemption, and, you know, it, it seems to me that, that across the board, 10% doesn't really address some of the, some of the issues that we have to deal with, and I like the idea, maybe 10% for this many square feet, and this many square feet, and a different percentage, perhaps, for the smaller ones, you know, in order to make us, if we're not going to be, if we're not going to get rid of the exemptions for the garages, 80 square feet is hardly anything, you know?
80 square feet is the difference between a 10% reduction and what I've proposed here. The difference between 10% and what we have right now at the 5,000 square foot level is 180 square feet, about the size of that garage carport exemption.
But I would think that, once again, it would make it simpler if we eliminated some of these exemptions as well, and also might get us in an area more than what we're looking at. I mean, the home we just looked at on a 4,700, 4,750 square foot lot, if you add in 200 square feet for the carport, was 2,300 square feet.
It was over FAR, too, if you take, if you take the exemption out.
If you take, yeah, I mean, with, with the exemptions they had.
Yeah.
It was 2,300 square feet on a 4,700 square foot lot. So if we remove some of the exemptions as well, we're going to be getting close to those numbers you were talking about.
I, I agree with, I mean, I think we should keep some of the exemptions, too, and I guess the reason is that, in reality, pragmatically, the way the FAR number is approached by, developed by the people who are coming here, is that they want to build out to the max, and that's what's been the problem. So in order to really make a difference, we need to significantly lower the FAR, because I think there's, people are still going to build out to, want to build out to the max.
Whatever we do, they will build out to the max. I mean, Lester mentioned the, the cost of land here is so high, that whatever parcel you buy, you're going to build the biggest thing you can get on it, which didn't, used to be how people approached building their houses.
I like, and so maybe we can have something like this, and have, get rid of some of the other exemptions, and, you know, and have that discretion.
So, so getting back to...
But this is a temporary fix.
Well, so getting back to what staff heard, general consensus on, or at least a majority on, is from the planning commission, is explore an approximate 10% reduction in the floor area ratio, with some flexibility at the lower and higher ends.
You said you were going to look at small lots, anyway.
That's exactly right, and we will be looking at the design standards on small lots, and getting to Commissioner Monet's point, I don't think the concerns are 100% driven by floor area ratio. Some of them are the design types and the other development standards, such as allowing the same setback on a single story as a two-story, and, and we can address that when we get to the small lot development standards. There seemed to be consensus, or at least a majority, interested in exploring, encouraging garages over carports?
I think so.
And then a review of the size of porches, potentially modifying the blanket exemption to provide some type of a square footage number or ratio number on the porches. Okay. And then allowing basements with an average of approximately two feet above grade, subject to building code input, to also be exempt. Staff assumes that the non-habitable shed exemption can be removed.
What did you guys think about the attic? Are you against finished attic being exempted?
I would think the attic should remain non-habitable, once again. If you do that, then you get, you're pushing the 25 feet again.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there, it's, there are building code input requirements into that as well, that, that's an important factor. So that's what staff has heard general support for amongst the majority of the commission.
Hey, Noah?
Yes?
So I have a question, then. So if the current FAR, according to the majority of the commission, believes that a 5,000, or if the current FAR allows a 5,000 square foot home, or let's go, let's do something more reasonable. If the current FAR allows a 2,500 square foot home, and yet they build, instead they decide to do a basement that is exempted, so that means they could build a 5,000 square foot home because the basement is exempted? And, you know, if the 2,500 square foot were all on one level? Is that the intent of the commission?
That's an excellent question, and I have seen some instances where basements are larger than the home, above them, so we can look into options to, to limit the size of basements to where it's not the whole of the parcel.
I can't imagine why it would matter.
Well, this has been done in other communities, and some of those communities did have problems with gigantic basements over 1,200 square foot homes, so we might want to, you might want to, you know...
What were the problems?
Maybe you want to limit to the footprint of the house.
The footprint of the house?
For integrity of the lot.
Yeah, you could do...
There have been, this is, this is a valid point. There are some communities have experienced this, where they don't regulate basements, and, and I've actually seen proposals to construct unbelievably large basements.
These wouldn't be unregulated.
You could limit to the footprint of the house.
Exactly.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be unregulated. I mean, no one's suggesting that the basements be unregulated.
So staff will look at a FAR exemption that also essentially passes the smell test for what, what makes sense. So that's, that's what staff has heard, is a general input on the floor area ratio direction from the body of the commission?
Thank you.
And just so you know, I occasionally, staff presents to the local real estate community. I was there yesterday, and I informed them of this discussion. We have Mr. Dorte in the back taking notes, I'm sure there will be an article, and we will, once this makes, it turns into an audit and moves through the process, we will let the development and real estate community know of these changes well in advance, so that way they are not caught off guard.
They can come in and... David, the witching hour is approaching.
Yes, yes, it is, but hey, I'm still here.
It's Tuesday night!
So I think that concludes the discussion on item 6.1.
Yeah, so all we have left is your 8-1, I think, huh?
And I do have a few things to report on. One, just a reminder of the commission and the public, that there is a joint planning commission city council meeting scheduled for both the 13th, so next Tuesday, and that's to have a fair housing workshop here in the council chamber at 4:00 PM, and then also on...
Happens if we're sick.
And also on, you have to watch from home, also on February 20th, to have a discussion on the scope of the general plan and general plan EIR. Zenyuk.
Oh, sorry.
And so the intended ad is to provide direction to staff and the consultants before they run with the scope of the general plan EIR, kick off the scoping meeting, notice of preparation, all those things. So staff will be providing some background documents to inform that discussion, namely a majority of the information that was previously reviewed by the body of the commission, and some summary information. In addition, the home loan grant that the, as many of you remember, the city received a $500,000 grant for rehabilitation of properties that are owned by low-income individuals. We are beginning to kick that property, or that process off. We have a flyer here that's going to be mailed out. This is not the actual flyer.
The big one.
This, this is a draft. This one may be one that goes out to the mobile homeowners. There is also a separate one for the owners of more conventional construction, but it is, we are kicking it off. We're going to start notifying folks, I'm going to announce it at the council meeting next week, and flyers are going out in the mail, so those will be there. We plan on trying to schedule a meeting at Vineyard Valley to present to them, in addition to sending a direct mailer to the owners of the Voorhees Circle affordable housing unit. So just so you're aware of that, there is limits. It is a loan, but I think it's a deferred payment loan, and there's no, it's a very good deal.
I'll ask him.
Spanish.
Oh, good question. So yes, they are being mailed in English and Spanish, and thank you for the, for pointing that out in case we didn't. Similarly, the building department is going to be working to present an ADA presentation to the business community. And the dates of this are Americans with Disabilities Act. So you, you may recall, there was recently some folks who came through town and filed lawsuits... So you may recall, there was recently some folks who came through town and filed lawsuits against individuals who were not 100% ADA compliant. There is a population of folks who do this regularly, and so it's in everyone's best interest to be aware of the regulations.
We call them professional plaintiffs, and the act is set up in a way that incentivizes that.
And when you're in a, you know, 130-year-old community, there's undoubtedly some ADA deficiencies, and so our building department, in conjunction with Yountville and Calistoga, will be hosting these. They're open to the public, but they're targeted towards the business community to know what they can do with their properties or owners of commercial property.
Noah, why don't you send all these dates out to us?
And I will send them out. These are scheduled for April 24th in Yountville from 2:00 to 4:00, and then they'll also occur on the same day in Calistoga from 6:00 to 8:00. And we'll notify the Chamber of Commerce. We're going to send out the flyers to all of you. We'll notify the city council, but I did want to announce it because it's important to get on people's schedules. Finally, the agenda forecast document that's in your packets has been lacking for several months, and I do apologize. It is updated. The updated version did not make it into your agenda packet, but that will be uploaded to the website tomorrow for this agenda. I'll forward it out to all of you. You can see we have an unbelievably large workload going on. We had 15 applications filed in January alone. This is planning applications only, so we are definitely having a significant workload given the, basically, the fruits of the economy are coming to fruition here in St. Helena. And Zenya Gamaro is doing excellent work, keeping the website updated, so every application that's in is available for review on the city's website. Planning Department, Planning Projects subdivision on Pope Street was filed, commercial building on McCormick was filed, so I would encourage folks to check out those lists. There are substantially large projects filed in our department right now.
How big a subdivision?
It's a 10-acre parcel proposing currently approximately 30 units. There was a neighborhood meeting for, proposed, or held for this item a year ago.
That's in Mercy Site?
There's the Mercy Site, that's exactly right. Yes, that, that was submitted, 18 lots with two units on each one. So I would encourage everyone to review those plans and just be aware, these are very preliminary numbers. The current design does not meet the density requirements. There are some elements proposed as alternative ways to meet that, but this is going to be going in the review process for a while, but I'm just trying to be as transparent as possible with everyone now.
He needs to build some affordable housing, too, a lot.
It is a housing opportunity site, so just, we're well aware of that, and the application just came in, so it's, it's just, it's very preliminary. I imagine they're waiting to see what our issues letter is and our incompleteness letter requires, and then we'll move it forward. But just letting everybody know, that is in process.
David?
Yes.
Oh, just checking. I'd be asleep if I were you. Chair Kistner, I believe it's past Commissioner Knudsen's bedtime. Are we ready to adjourn?
I'm on West, hey, Les, I'm on West Coast time, my friend.